Are you going to call the meeting to order?
Yes, this is a special meeting of the Board of Directors of Rim and this Water District on the 24th of May. I need a roll call.
Director Bragman.
Here.
Director Gibson.
Here.
Director Kohler.
Here.
Director Schmidt.
Here.
And President Russell.
Here.
Thank you.
Any public comments on items on on the agenda?
Hello? There are no. On the closed session item.
Okay. Okay, so this is a closed session. So do we keep going on this one or we have to switch out now?
We do. Well, we'll keep this one open for the public.
We are the closed session adjourned at 5:35. There was no reportable action. Okay, can we start the webinar?
Yes.
Yes, if we're ready, I'll go ahead, President Russell. Good evening, Paul Saye, Water Resources Director. Yep.
Sorry, nevermind, go ahead.
We're just so everybody knows where we are, we're the third board working session. And just briefly, you know, remind us that the first session, we looked at a detailed overview of the process that we're engaged in. You know, looked at goals, we took a quick tour of the model and we'll be revisiting some of that this evening. Of course, we looked at drought and you know how we would think about developing what drought scenario we would be considering. And of course, demand as well. Along with that, we sort of took a brief overview of the water supply alternatives, you know, recycled water, Marin Sonoma options, desalination, enhancing local supplies, demand management, and of course, inter ties of different configurations, whether it's all the way over to Contra Costa or SFCUC and maybe even up to the North Bay inner time. And that, then we touched on the final two steps in our process, which is the evaluation of those alternatives and of course culminating in the development of the roadmap. So that's sort of the overview of where we're headed. The second session, we took a bit of a focus dive on demand, where we looked at demand by sectors. And that helped us focus towards residential demand and what the opportunities for water savings might be in those categories. And that, that session sort of concluded, that second session concluded with a preview of tonight's topic, which is scenarios. And this evening, Armin Munivar and Marcelo Regnato will take us through PowerPoint. You know, that's going to give us a detailed look at the development of a, of a scenario, a baseline scenario. And how some of those things that we talked about in both sessions, one and two, might be used and incorporated into a scenario. And so tonight, I'll just pull up our presentation. And we can get going on that. So tonight's working session will, will focus through, you know, a number of the planned, proposed planning scenarios. So there are five proposed planning scenarios and we'll be talking in specifics about just one of them tonight. So we'll be overviewing all of them in some form. We'll also be discussing the decision support model, which is our tool for evaluating. You know, this is the tool that allows us to see, for example, where our water supply, our storage levels are going to be at. And the detailed look at a baseline simulation tonight before concluding with next steps. So our public engagement has been ongoing since April, the overview that I talked about, the demand management, deeper dive. And tonight, drought scenarios and this baseline reliability that we'll be talking about. And those will be followed into June, July and August with additional scenarios early in June and the results of those scenarios. So to the other, you know, four or five scenarios that I mentioned. And then late June, we'll be looking at in some depth, the water supply alternatives themselves before getting into the evaluation process. And ultimately, as I said, the roadmap. And so at this point, I'll hand it over to Armin Jacobs to get us going.
Thanks, Paul. Good evening, board members. So we've got to set up slides here. We wanted to, and it, just to give you a sense for timing. We think this is probably maybe 30, 30 minutes or so of discussion, 35 minutes or so of presentation. And then however long the discussion might take, so we're not, we don't anticipate this is a really lengthy agenda item, even though it's very important, it's a, it's a partial product that we'll be sharing with you today. So as Paul and Ben and Lucy and I have been talking over the past several weeks, we're, we're giving you these periodic updates of kind of where we are in the process. So like, guess treat today as, as another kind of status check of where we're at in the process. It's not a fully complete baseline assessment at this point. Yeah, thanks, Paul. So just to, just to give you a summary of the process, you've seen this before, remind you of where, where we're at. Today, we'll be talking about essentially the, the second to the third steps in this process. The decision support model. Marcelo Regnato with Jacobs will do a little bit of a deeper dive into what the model is, what it isn't, how it's going to be used in the process. We'll start with scenarios, talking about the scenarios. And then a little bit about how some of the strategy, the goals lead into performance criteria that we'll, we'll use with the, with the model for evaluation. That we'll, we won't touch on the water supply alternatives until the next two sessions or the second session from now. We can go to the next slide, Paul. Yeah, so, so talking about the drought scenarios. So I wanted to step back a little bit. I know we've seen this slide before. Really thinking about scenario planning processes and just a, maybe a few examples of how scenario planning is used in, in multiple areas of the world. So really the kind of the advent of scenario planning in, in the United States at least was, was in the 1960s and 70s with Shell Oil. Looking at what the, what the oil market might look globally, they wanted to play out various scenarios of how they would, they would invest as a business. So they, they looked and explored these various futures of, of the global carbon and the like. And, and played out business models associated with that. You know, the military, the Department of Defense looks globally at, at scenarios of famine of, of instability, regions of instability or insecurity and manages and thinks about kind of the events that might play out on the globe and how they might respond to it. So. And then looking kind of in the water sector. We were working with Bureau of Reclamation about a decade or so ago and did a really robust scenario planning process for, for the seven states of the Colorado River Basin. And with environmental organizations and water managers and public agencies, energy, et cetera. Trying to explore the trajectory of the Colorado River Basin and, and what might be done to help create sustainability in that basin over the future. So scenario planning has got a long history associated with it. Almost all of it is very similar to what we're trying to do here. So. We're trying to explore what the future could, what's a different, different visions of the future, different views of what the future might be, look like. Want to make sure we capture those areas of greatest uncertainty. So things like climate change and drought variability. Want to learn from, learn from the historical precedent that we have, but then also kind of project out to the future. So that's what we're really looking at is, we're not trying to create scenarios that just kind of all fall relatively close to each other on this scenario funnel graphic that we're talking about, or we're showing on the screen here. But really, can we develop some scenarios that capture the, the realm of this, of the outer edges of this cone of uncertainty? And a few that fall within that kind of the center of this cone of uncertainty. So that's really what we're attempting to do with the scenarios is, is not predict the future, but provide some alternative plausible views of the future. And then test all of our solutions, the water management solutions against those, those future scenarios. So once again, scenarios are not intended to capture uncertainty that is, or they're intended to capture uncertainty that's not within the management control of this decision. So largely those things that could happen due to kind of natural systems like climate or political systems like, like state government or federal government or, or societal things that, that the district doesn't have, have a control over. Largely, we want to explore the water supply and the water demand aspects, but we could also envision operational uncertainty and political policy level uncertainty. So we've articulated five scenarios that we are proposing for, for use in, in the analysis and characterizing the water supply assessment. The first one is, is a current trends and I'll have a table that follows this, that talks about the various assumptions. But the first one is really looking at, okay, current trends, we know what, what historically has occurred. We, we just experienced a pretty severe drought, we know where demands have gone, we know where the operational problems are, kind of a continuation of those current trends. So if anything, you would say that's maybe close to the center of, center of that funnel that we showed previously. We have a scenario called accelerated conservation and certainly these names are not final. But the intent is for this to explore a different level of, of water use efficiency in the district. The third one, third scenario is we're calling short and severe droughts are really this acute nature of, of a, multi-year drought of, of great severity. So years 20, you know, what are your 20, 20, 21, 1976, 1977, those are, are good examples of really short and severe droughts. Scenario four is where we're trying to look beyond the drought of record. So looking at these longer, more prolonged extended droughts on the order of five plus years. And then finally, scenario five is trying to look at some of the abrupt disruptions and we'll, we'll talk about some of the assumptions that we're still developing for that scenario on the next slide. Maybe just, just before we go there, Paul, just, if we just think about those, those five scenarios and think of those as being points on the edge of that, that uncertainty funnel. That we're certainly not capturing all of the uncertainty that could be as part of that scenario funnel, but we're trying to identify representative scenarios that capture that range. So that's what we're targeting with these scenarios. Okay, thanks, Paul. So just as an example, and we'll work through some of this more in the next session. These are the five scenarios that we just identified in the rows here. And then we've, we've put hydroclimate assumptions as the first column, demand assumptions as second, and then operational assumptions in the third column. And so our current thinking on these scenarios is that, so if we just take scenario one as a, as a starter. We would be looking at kind of the historical observed hydroclimate conditions. We have quite a long record of over 100 years of record of hydroclimate variability that has droughts and wet years and hot and cold. And we combine that with this passive level savings that's kind of similar to what's in the urban water management plan projections right now. Would result in about approximately eight percent less than without passive at the 2045 level, total demand. And then the current, we largely implement that with current operations, which includes a local supply preference. So preferencing your, your, your locally generated water supply. And then only using supplemental water during those periods of extreme low local supply. It would include the Castagna pump station rehabilitation. So during those periods of high need for importation, you'd have the higher capacity to bring that water in. That scenario two has identical assumptions with the exception of the demand. So we have, here we'd be looking at passive plus programmatic levels, conservation savings. And so this goes for comparing to the previous one goes to about 14% less than without passive at 2045. Bless you.
Can I, can I ask, I don't know what that means. There's, there's always going to be passive savings. So maybe I'm just not understanding what you mean.
Yeah, it's just a measuring stick, really, that they're in the urban water management plan, there was a, the baseline was essentially, okay, what, what if you didn't have any passive level changes, what would 25, 45 demands look like? And so we're just measuring in the first one, we're saying with passive level is about eight percent lower than not included, including passive. And then this, this scenario two would be 14% lower than that, non-including passive.
And what's, what's the difference between the two?
And I just, I don't understand why we would ever make such an unrealistic assumption. I, I don't, I just don't understand the value of, of making the assumption that there wouldn't be passive conservation. If anything, everything that I see is that passive conservation is expected to go up, not down. So am I not understanding what you're proposing here?
Yeah, I think there's some confusion. So.
Okay.
The scenario one, all of them include passive level conservation. So let me just be clear there.
Okay.
Pass, the passive level as was can, assumed in the urban water management plan, that's what's in scenario one. That's passive. The second one, Director Bragman, you're just asking, the second one is passive plus programmatic level. So this would be a continuation of, of conservation programs that, that your district is investing in. So there's both a passive element, people changing out fixtures, new homes. And then, and then the element of savings associated with, with implementing your, your programmatic conservation programs.
Okay.
Maybe this is semantics things because it clearly says, you know, if some person, eight or 14% less than without passive conserve, I mean, I don't know. I think, I think you guys need to work on what you're talking about here because it looks like you're talking about, you're assuming without, it clearly says without passive conservation. So since there always will be passive conservation, it's a very confusing way of phrasing it. So I honestly don't understand what you're saying here, but I, I mean, I understand that you're saying that actually assuming there will be passive conservation, but the words actually say without it. So maybe this is just the way you've written it, but.
It's a measure, measurement.
Yeah, maybe I could see if I can muddy the waters for their director color, hopefully not. Yeah, I think it's really just.
Not just for water technical people. I mean, I understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
Jargon. This is something the board and the public need to understand. And this is, there's like a bunch of double negatives here that are, I just.
It's tempting to say that, that passive level savings are about eight percent over the course of true 2045. So where it says it's eight percent less than without any passive savings. So that's really all it's saying.
I'm going to suggest that you revise that for, for regular people speaking regular English, because passive conversation, conservation is always going to happen. And therefore saying without passive, it suggests that you are, you see that, you see the challenge for those of us.
We appreciate it and.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right, we'll tighten up the English language on our slides here. Apologize for that. Hopefully it's understood though, that, that the second one includes both passive and the concert, programmatic conservation programs. The, the scenario three. Scenario three is really exploring this severity of drought, this shortened severe drought. And while we have 2020, 20 and 2021, we got bailed out a little bit by 2022, at least a couple storms of 2022. So what we're proposing here is to run a synthetic drought. This is something similar we've done for the regional water supply resiliency study, where we couple the water years 2020, 2021. And then we assume that the following two years have hydrology that's similar to 1976 and 1977. So we're, we're kind of, we're creating a synthetic four-year drought, which is certainly plausible in what we, what we see. But it's not observed in the historical record, but certainly plausible with some of the future projections.
It'd be, for me, it'd be easier if you just said hypothetical, but again, that's just the English language.
Okay.
I, I mean, honestly, I didn't even understand what a synthetic drought actually meant. But now I do, but I don't know if anybody else will who's reading it the first time.
Okay, thanks. Noted. We got, we got into our techno jargon. This, I think this particular scenario, scenario three will be one of the most impactful in terms of testing your system. You've not yet experienced a, a four-year drought. And I think with the system like yours, that, that unless there's a, a substantial wet season in between, you tend to deplete storage quite, quite a bit faster. The next scenario is scenario four, where we'd be looking at, so it may, an extended be what we're calling beyond drought of record. So this would be a longer range drought, so looking at either six to seven years of drought. We seem to find droughts of this length in the climate projections. What they tend to do is be not as severe from year to year in their projections where they're not as severe as 2020 and 2021. But their duration is substantially longer, you know, doubling, almost doubling the, the length of those droughts. And, and we do see some of that occurring in the, in the Western US with kind of longer term aridity in the basins and lots of the watersheds. A little bit less so in the coastal watersheds where you're, you're buffered by, by the ocean. But I think this is a very, this would be a very informative drought scenario as well. So we kind of have the, the shorter term, short four years is, is short, I guess that's our shorter term drought. And then six or seven years will be our extended drought. We can combine these, either these two scenarios with, with either of the two demand assumptions up above in scenarios one and two. So we might create, depending on how we find the system response, we might create sub scenarios like three A and three B and four A and four B. And then finally, the last one is, is looking at abrupt disruptions. This is one where we're, we're still working on the assumptions and we'll have to finalize this further. But the intent is to look at operational disruptions that are more abrupt in nature, things that could be, could occur during a drought. Like a wildfire, a drought that triggers a wildfire. And then the following rainfall events generate a large amount of sediment load with high organics and carbon in that, in that runoff. And then we start to look at the treatability of, of that water at the treatment plants and the capability of doing that. So we want to explore that and see, is that a realistic scenario? And, and I believe it is a realistic scenario, it's just how severe will it actually be on the treatability of the supply. We also looked at, it could be seismic events that, that take out supply for a short period of time. Potter Valley Project or some policy-based disruption. Okay, thanks, Paul. So, so working through the scenarios for each of the scenarios, we're going to be evaluating with the, the model, the performance of the system reservoir, storage flows, the, the ability to meet demands for each one of those scenarios. And one of the, one of the performance criteria that will be, one of the key performance criteria will be, what's the minimum acceptable storage levels for the district that you want to characterize? At which point, if you were to fall below those levels, it would trigger the need for an action, whether that's a demand management action or a new water supply action or an operational action to, to buffer storage for the, for the period. Paul and his team have been looking at what that minimum acceptable level that could be for total Marin storage. So overall storage, you have just under, you know, just shy of 80,000 acre feet total storage. If we look at the Deadpool, basically the, the storage that is inaccessible in all your reservoirs. And couple that with some uncertainty of the treatability of that low, low lying water. Now that's roughly 10,000 acre feet of storage that, that you would, once you drop below 10,000 feet, you may not be able to access that water and, and move it through your system. On top of that, we've, we've called something called emergency storage here, which is basically a level that we've never dropped below in the past. So last year for, in 2021, for example, in October, I think you dropped just to 25,000 acre feet total storage. That was your, that was your lowest point before the rains kind of bailed out the system. So we have this emergency storage buffer that's on top of the Deadpool buffer. And we're saying the combination of those two, basically the bottom two pools is what we would define as any storage that goes below that level is starting to trigger the need for, for a substantial action to be developed. So in all of our scenarios, when we run them through, we're always going to be looking at storage in comparison to these, to these levels on this slide here.
Yeah, excuse me, I would just add to that, Armin, if I could, that the emergency storage really represents about six months worth of supply, you know, in terms of, of demand. So it's, it may seem like a lot, but really, if you imagine we come out of a dry spell in a drought at April 1st, right? Our rains are typically over. This would give us, you know, sufficient water to, to maybe have six to eight months worth of supply. So it's not completely arbitrary in that respect.
Can I ask, how are we all considering the supply that we effectively have in Sonoma, right? I mean, we've got a contract, we've got greater capacity. So we certainly, and I think for good reasons, you know, good operational and good, you know, best practice reasons. We use storage levels to trigger, you know, various actions. But we do effectively have storage in Sonoma as well. So how are you, how are you, or are you bringing that into this analysis?
Yeah, so the, great question, Cynthia. These levels, as we drop storage in, in Marin reservoirs, we will be triggering the, the need or the desire to pull more water out of supplemental water from, from Lake Sonoma. So we are not building in a storage trigger necessarily from Lake Sonoma storage, but using this Marin municipal storage to trigger the need to pull more water, more supplemental water from, from the Russian River.
Okay, the reason I ask is because I've gotten a few questions about how suggesting both from the media as well as from constituents that, you know, and again, I think I, I'm not criticizing the way that this described, but there's a sense that if it's, we don't have water stored in our reservoir, we don't have water, like nothing else counts, counts as, you know, supply. So I'm, I'm just wondering if there's a way for you to, for this to be somewhat transparent. I'm just wondering if there's a way for you to for this to be somewhat transparent about the way in which are other sources of supply, you know, whether it's reuse or you know, or the contract we have with Sonoma, which is a very significant source of our supply, but doesn't doesn't resonate with the public and with the media as available water supply that we have, in fact, invested in significantly that does go to our resilience and does go to our ability to provide water to our consumers.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point and we can we can be adding elements to this here to say out of out of local, local storage, other elements that would contribute to that. What we're really trying to target this for is saying this is an indicator of when the system is is in dire need of of either new supplier or an action that that drives the drives a new operations. We want to identify what conditions drop us below these levels and then we're going to identify what can we do about it, which could be a re-management of of supplemental water from like from the Russian River.
I totally agree. I'm just saying, I think there's been, you know, again, I I don't mean to be overly focused on messaging, but we do have a public and we do have a media that's watching this process. I think that's great. I think it's important. I think it's appropriate. But I think there are important issues around our supply that are being missed. So I'm just asking if there's an opportunity to make clear that our source of supply is not limited to the seven reservoirs on the mountain for purposes of this analysis. So maybe we can talk about that separately, but just in light of some of the confusion I'm seeing out there, it seems a very important thing to somehow be transparent about as you're going through this assessment. So thanks for considering that.
Yeah, thank thanks for that. And we we will absolutely do that in the next round here. Okay, I think to keep us keep us moving. So I though that's kind of the high level view of the scenarios and that one performance criteria that we're starting to utilize to test out in the model, I'm going to soon hand off to Marcelo Reggino, who's going to talk a little bit about the model, but want to make sure we're understanding that the decision support model is really to help us identify those conditions at which we are dropping below our performance criteria. And then as we get into the water supply alternatives in later sessions, it would be what do we do about those those conditions? Okay, I think with that I can hand it off to my colleague.
Thanks, Armin. So Paul, we can go to the next slide. Yeah. We start here with the the model purpose, right? And like like Carmen described, we have all these scenarios and the question is that, okay, how how are you going to do that, right? How are you going to evaluate how low your storage could drop in a specific scenario? When you test all these different hydrology sequences that we have from the past and also from climate change or other hydrological conditions. And that's what the 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 purpose of the model is this mathematical tool. That's that's what it is, a mathematical tool. Then we're going to plug all these numbers. We're going to plug the hydrology, the 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 system, the demands, the scenario conditions. And you're going to run this and 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 get the the metrics, which is like the information that we're going to need to make our decision. So that's that's the purpose of the model to provide information so we can make decisions in the past in in the in the process here. So some of the questions we had, you know, when we start developing this model is that, okay, how reliable the the system rings, your system will be under different future draw drought conditions, right? And that's one thing we'll be running in the model. Another thing is that how how much additional water supply you might needs under these different conditions? So if we if we see your storage really dropping in many of the scenarios, you might need additional additional supply. And it could be more imported water from from Sonoma or desalination or more conservation or we'll we'll decide. And that's the way that's the way we test all these alternatives. That's the 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 mathematical tool that we test you that. So that's the the purpose. What the model is, it's a water balance with a lot of systems operation rules. So we have reservoir rules, we the way we move water through the system. It has limitations on capacity through the system. So it's a little bit more than just a simple water balance spreadsheet, if you will. The calculations are in a daily time step, not all our inputs are in a daily time step. So we can always roll back to monthly and annual time step, see our results in a monthly and annual time step. But the model right now is running on a daily. What the model is not is not a hydraulic model. So it's a model that we're not going to be able to get pressure or velocity on specific pipes of the system. That's not the purpose of these models. For that, you have a totally different kind of model that perform this kind of operation. So that's a a summary, quick summary of the the model purpose here. Matt's lot next slide. Yeah. This is just to remind you is I I presented this slide before, just to scope the of of the the model, right, the domain. So it starts all the way up north from Lake Pillsbury. And then we have the the Russian River, we have the Sonoma collectors, the transmission system and and your system, marine system. That's what the the left schematic is showing, very simplified schematic of the system, just so you can see the big picture. Of course, the model is a little bit more more complex than that. That's what the the model schematic in the middle of this slide is is trying to capture. When you see a little bit more detail, when you see the marine, your system at the bottom and and we're expanding that. So our model approach is what we call the top down model development. When we start with simple assumptions, then we run the model with tests and we do our model validation. And in areas that the model is not performing very well according to our validation metrics, we go and try to understand why and we add more detail a lot of times to have a better representation of the system. That's what we are currently doing on your system. So we're expanding and that's what the the charts on the right is is trying to show, which is the next slides.
Before you go to the next slide, Marcelo, I don't want to stop your flow here. This is really great. I'm wondering to what extent how you folks are bounding the uncertainty associated with Lake Pillsbury. Obviously, that that project with the Potter Valley Project being in pretty uncertain territory right now. How, whether you folks are are running maybe a separate scenario that has it come offline versus I don't know if you're whether the scenarios you're planning on running are under current diversion rates or what your assumptions are. Can you speak to that?
Sure. Yeah. We do have the capability, Director Schmidt, we do have the that capability in the model right now. We have some switches that we can turn off the project totally, or we can reduce the capacity of the the Potter Valley. Or we can change a little bit, we can think think how we want to model that. That's something that didn't come up until now on developing scenarios for that specific project. But we do have the capability, the the Porter Valley Project is implemented in this version of the model.
And and if I just chime in a little bit, Director Schmidt, for part of the regional water supply resiliency study, which your district is participating, we are looking at the Potter Valley Project uncertainty in and of itself. So we're looking at reduced flows coming in from the eel as well as almost a no flow coming into the eel. So we we are measuring that in the regional resiliency study and then that scenario five that I identified earlier, we we're still exploring whether that should be a local water supply abrupt diversion change or something like a Potter Valley Project. So I think we may use it as go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Now, we may use the regional water supply resiliency study to provide information to inform this work for for Marin. Or we could do a simple test scenarios to see the relative impact on on Marin system.
I I think that would be running a scenario so we can understand the relative impact, it would tell whether it's worth in its own scenario, the 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 impact scenario right now that looks at a wildfire, I think is a really important one for us to really consider straightforward. So I I would be loathe to to take that out of the scenario because it that is such seems like a very substantial impact to our system that we would really want to look at in a long term planning, but understanding as well what the the impact of of no diversions, which would be the worst case scenario, obviously, would have on us would be really good to understand as well.
Yep, I think this will also come up on the alternatives meeting that we're going to have. Because we have an alternative that tries to optimize the contract that you have with Sonoma, the imported water. And that will be impacted by the Porter Valley Project. So we're going to see a little bit more of that in the in the future meetings. So, yeah, this this slide here is just trying to show you how we are representing the system right now. And and the level of detail that we have, right? So we have all the reservoirs on the left side of the the system. Then we have the watershed divides, that's a that's indicator of how much you need to pump from 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 west to east. And that the marine distribution system and how things are connected, you know, you have exit imported water from the aqueduct coming through Castagna, Inacio going through your distribution system. You have the treatment plants flows and then you have also the projects that will be turning on and off like the salination, DPR, recycle water, all the projects, we're going to build those projects in the model and we have switches and we're going to tweak the capacity of these projects to based on what we're going to set on our scenarios. Then we were going to run the different hydrologies and see how the system performs. So it's almost like you could when we had this done, you could go and and click in one of these reservoirs and you could see what is the reservoir level after a simulation. So that's something that we're going to have at the end of this this effort. Which next slide? A little bit about the the model assumptions and the the inputs and the data quality, right? What kind of what kind of data are we using? A lot of people say garbage in, garbage out. So we're making sure we're using good data that was already checked before by the district. So one of the the main model inputs that we have are the inflows to the reservoirs. That's a very important input. And right now we have inflows to the reservoirs from nineteen twenty seven to twenty twenty one on a monthly time step. And this data came from mainly two reports from the district. So the two thousand two water supply planning model and preliminary water supply option analysis reports that was back in two thousand two. That had flows from twenty seven to two thousand historical data. And then the Water Resources Plan twenty forty reports. And that had flows from nineteen ninety two to two thousand twenty one. So we're using that data, we're assuming that's a good quality. It was already vetted and we can use in our model. Besides that, we have the influence to the Russian River, right, including the U River, Russian River. And that's from the data that we have is from nineteen ten to two thousand seventeen. The this this data came from a Sonoma water and from some modeling that they had and there's a daily time step format. So that's also a key model inputs that we have. So besides that, we also have precipitation, good precipitation records from Lake Lagunitas, that's from eighteen seventy nine to present. There's a precipitation data is used now to the minimum strength flows that we need to calculate for Sulahuli and the Kent reservoir. So we're going to be using for that reason. And what we have in the model in terms of facilities, it's your is it existence system, the reservoirs, the treatment plants, the main connections, plus the future projects, right? When when I when I told you that in the schematic that we're going to include the different projects with the switch on and off and the ability to change capacities. That's a that's what we're going to have. That's an assumption. Again, is a daily time step model and we provide results in a monthly or annual time scale. Sometimes it's much easier to see that first on the annual scale and then go down in a in a in a time resolution.
I have a question, Marcelo, on on the Lagunitas precipitation record being used as a basis for your model. The I don't really think it applies to Sulahuli. I mean, which is significantly more arid part of Marin. And so I don't think the Lagunitas precipitation record is really of much value as far as predicting performance at Sulahuli.
No, yeah, Director Bregman, that's a very good point. So let me clarify that. So there is a correlation that was developed between Lagunitas and what would be any station close to Sulahuli. So I didn't get into that detail. So there is a correlation that was developed. But the data that we have is from Lagunitas and from Lagunitas, we go to these different places. So, yeah. There's a little detail, yeah. And that was part, by the way, that's by my last my last bullet there. Okay, we're assuming that the flows are accurate, but we're doing a high level independent check of the data, right? So we download some data from the USGS, some precipitation data, we did some comparisons, check some correlations. So we're doing some some high level independent check of the data. The two boxes that I have on the on the side here, just the summary of the the main model inputs and outputs, right? So inputs are the river flows, just just to be clear, because a lot of models use precipitation and from precipitation, they derive flows and 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 go from that. But our model is starting at flows, river flows, that's the that's the main inputs. So river flows, reservoir inflows, local supplies that are available or will be available to your system. The system demands, that's another input that we can tweak. Flow limitations in your system because of pipeline constraints or or facilities constraints like pump stations. And how you operate the system. The main model outputs include the the model scenarios that Armin talked about. The the deliveries in your system, how how much you're going to deliver from the different supplies that you have or you might have, might consider in the future. The reservoir levels, that's a key one and maybe specific system flows at specific points in the system that might be interesting to to get. So again, this is a very summary here, a little bit about the model validation, how are you going to do, how are you going to validate? Make sure that the model is producing good quality results. So pretty standard here, we compare our model results with historical values, right? What happened in the past? That's our comparison. Our validation period here will be from two thousand nine from two thousand twenty one. And you might ask, well, you have hydrology data that go all the way back to nineteen twenty seven, why you don't use that? Well, the demands in the system, in this case, the demands of the system is our limiting factor here. So that's why we're starting in two thousand nine, October, two thousand nine. So we're doing the validation from that point and comparing what our model is generating with the historical uh historical time series of your system. The plot on the side here is showing it as an example. We're still, we're still working on this. Uh, but this is the total surface storage in your in your system. And the the black line is what the model is doing. And the blue line is uh the historical, so uh the historical levels, historical storage in your system. So you can see a very good correlation right now and uh present R square or be more technical, but uh we'll be looking at that. Uh, not only that, but also how we are delivering to uh supplies to your system. Or also the water treatment plants uh productions. So your two treatment plants, how they are operating and how that compares to what you've done in the past. So tho- those will be the main uh validation parameters we'll be using.
Before you go on, can you go back? I I I think you went by a little bit fast about the on the validation. I I don't think I understand why is the demand a limitation on the val- on the use of the historic hydrologic data? I mean, those are those are different things. The hydrologic data is fixed, demand depends on a variety of you know, of issues, some within and some without of the district's control. So I'm I I think it would be helpful to unpack that, why you're only going back to ten years.
Sure. So when we when we developed this model uh for the Sonoma resilience plan, we noticed that there was a big difference in the demands uh before two thousand nine. And uh maybe Armin can chime in too. There was a, there was a a big difference on the demands in the system, maybe because of the conservation. It started a whole different uh uh level of conservation. And uh that's what we noticed. And also, I think the quality of the data going back, at least I can't speak from uh your your system, but from from the other uh 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 agencies in the system, it wasn't uh that great too. So with that, it is possible if uh if your your agency has that data. Uh, but then we will need to do a whole analysis again, look at the conservation, how things were done in the past. Uh, we definitely could uh plug that in a model and try. But uh that that was uh the reason, Director Koller, that's that's why we did that.
Yeah, I think it's it's um primarily the quality and the level of detail of the demand data. That we could, you know, you we typically, you typically do ten or fifteen years for a validation period and what we're trying to do is capture enough variability, but try to capture the most recent type of operations. Cause embedded within what's listed here as measured historical are operational changes, a different way of operating a reservoir, a different way of connecting with with supplemental supply, a different way of of recycled water in there. So the further back in time you go, the harder it is to um unpack all those changes that might have occurred.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
It would be a more of uh a higher level of effort because you can't imagine if you go all the way back to start, you need to start removing some of the reservoir expansions too, right? So you need to put more efforts in the in the development of the model. So, yeah, the last bullet here, yeah, so uh marine staff is is working to, we're working together validating the model because also it's a, they have a lot of knowledge of the system. So they're helping us doing an independent check uh of of the model results. Next slides. So I just wanna give you a flavor here of the model results. Again, we're still working on 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 this here, but uh wanna show you a few things. Uh, related to one scenario, right? So if you pick one scenario that maybe Armin mentioned uh before, uh how exactly that will look like once we run that scenario through different hydrologies? And we'll pick here, uh for example, just so we have one initial scenario here. We set uh your initial storage at at some point around between seventy thousand eighty, eighty thousand acre feet. And from that point, we run the scenario through different hydrologies. So we had a hundred and seven different hydrological sequences that we run, a hundred and seven times we run that model. So the mo- the model run uh all these uh we call realizations. And we saw what would happen with storage. So for example, what would happen with if you start with the storage at eighty thousand, but you had the hydrology that we uh had back in nineteen seventy uh five, seventy six, which was really dry. What would happen with your storage, right? So that's one of these lines that you're seeing there. Uh, so that gives you an idea from from running all these a hundred and seven realizations. You see that most lines are above fifty thousand, fifty five thousand acre feet. That's where we see the the big chunk of the the black lines. Now, uh, we do said see some realizations, some uh uh model runs that's went all the way down to thirty thousand. So some some uh dry periods that got us to thirty thousand on storage. And we do see one at least that got us down all the way to ten thousand. So there was one realization that was uh uh the driest one and got us there. So you can think about that in terms of probability, right? So you can see that most of your runs are around the black line. And you can think of the medium. So fifty percent of your simulations are above and fifty percent are below the 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 black line, which is now this color plots that's uh showing. So that's the that's the medium value. And now you, the different shades of red represents the the percentiles, the frequency that we saw. So if you see that only one line was dropping us very low uh to ten thousand, only one simulation out of the a hundred and seven. So that will be very low probability. And that's what the light shade of uh red is showing. So it's between zero and one percent of the simulations were at that uh level of storage. Uh, the yellow here is showing the emergency storage that Armin presented earlier. So that's what we'll be looking at. Okay, out of these uh realizations, how frequent, how frequent? What are the, what are the chances that you're gonna drop? Where you're gonna be at the emergency uh a storage? So that's what we'll be uh we'll be doing, evaluating all these uh scenarios that Armin uh uh described. So that was.
Marcelo, maybe just just add add to that last one. So if we look at the lower plot and and use that orange band that there is that twenty five to thirty thousand acre feet of of storage that we say we we don't wanna go below. That's our our trigger for low performance on the system. So you can see in this particular example here, we have between one and five percent of of our our realizations under this scenario fell below that that threshold. And so we had ninety five percent of our thresh- our scenarios did not, our realizations did not. But we do have these these uh plausible but low, low probability conditions. And that's really what we're trying to to manage around and and improve the reliability for.
Yeah. And uh this test here was using ju- just, again, this is just to illustrate our process, right? So we'll be doing that with the historical uh hydrological sequences. But also synthetic uh hydrological s- uh sequences like or 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 climate change, what could happen in the future, right? What kind of uh hydro- hydrological conditions we might have in the in the future? We will put that in a model and we see how these bands will change.
So to be clear, guys, on on this um second chart on the right, thi- this uses historical hydrology and just sort of a a baseline system supply and demand scenario, right?
Right.
There's no special supplies or special operational practices um in this uh example.
That's correct, yeah. Nor nor large demand management actions, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, great.
So with that, I'll pass you the poll that we'll do.
Yeah, sure. I'll take it from here. So um the the work continues. Um, the team will be working to fully quantify each of the sort of five scenarios and you know, each of those five scenarios may have sort of sub scenarios that get considered as we as we go along and test the system. Um, and there'll be updates and decision sort of refinements to the to the model as we go forward. Um, and then we're continuing to develop and get more detail on all of the water supply alternatives that we've talked about. And then we'll be starting to get into the detailed evaluation criteria. Uh, our schedule going forward, we touched on at the beginning, uh kind of where we'd been with the the um board working sessions. And so this is the last one in in May. We will be having um uh a public workshop June second, uh five to seven. Um, and then the rest of June will be looking more at scenarios. Um, so more of these charts and discussions on probabilities and percentages. And then uh June twenty eighth, we're hoping to have the deep dive on the the water supply alternatives. We're we're we'll be getting into the costs of some of those um water management actions. And July and August will see us head towards sort of uh uh roadmap development, once we get through the evaluation process. And we're thinking there may be a third workshop late July or or early August to to help uh keep the public engaged and involved and have an opportunity to discuss directly with the team. So at that point, that concludes our presentation this evening and we'd be happy to take any questions.
So um I have a couple of questions on the scenarios where where you went back and showed the overlay of the different scenarios and had the black band and then you had the colored presentation.
If I can bring that up for you. This guy.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So of the scenarios that dip below thirty thousand, did any of them include the enhanced conservation scenario? Not not at, for this illustration, not yet. No, these are all just to historical supplies with uh with uh uh I think the urban water management plan scenarios, yeah, not enhanced.
Yeah. So Director Bregman, just to uh wanna be clear too, that each line is not a different scenario, is a diff- different trace of hydrology. You can imagine is a different year that we start the hydrological sequence. This is just once representing just one scenario under different hydrological uh uh traces.
And hy- hydrological traces means historic rainfall?
Exactly. Yeah, historical rainfall. So if you think like, yeah, one line is uh when we start the model uh looking at precipitation in nineteen seventy six, another line might be one starting in nineteen eighty or nineteen ninety. So each line represents one sequence of precipitation.
Yeah.
That is translated into flow into in the model. But this here is one, this will be one scenario, one scenario, that we're gonna test all these different uh hydrological sequences.
You're gonna, you you will test the different scenarios with the different hydrological sequences.
Exactly. Yes, yeah. Here I'm showing just one scenario. Yeah.
Okay. And which scenario is this showing?
This is just uh current conditions with no changes in the system, right? Uh, urban water management plan uh demands and the system as it is, with with the limitations that it has.
Yeah, Director Bregman, this is not quite one of those num- uh five. It's it the closest one it is is to is scenario one. But it does not have the the demand uh assumptions associated with scenario one at this point. So this is kind of where we're at. We're at that next meeting. We'll I guess at the next meeting, what you can envision is that bottom plot will have one for every, each of the scenarios, which will
Okay.
which will allow you to see kind of the performance of the system against those different assumptions in the future.
Okay.
Okay. So this this seem, this is raw data, really, that's. Illustrative of how we're going to show results to you in the future, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, the actual, the the um language, I mean, it actually, I know it's, it seems pretty trivial, but the descrip- the descriptive language we're using and the labels we're using, I I think are somewhat important as far as explaining the situation to the public and 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 to the board. So that I think it does bear some um further work on um crisping it up, I guess, is making it clear.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess that anybody else has any questions?
I don't. I asked mine during the presentation, so I'll I'll just thank the consultants and the team for putting together a helpful presentation.
Yeah, likewise. This is is really exciting and interesting and look forward to seeing some some real model results of our our actual system. Jack, anything?
Okay, Cherry, let's have the public.
Okay, we have about five. Um, the first two, John Colette and Larry Minnick. Mr. Colette? I've enabled your speaking permissions. Okay, how about Mr. Larry Minnick? Oh, yes, Mr. Minnick, go ahead, sir.
Good evening. Um, Armin and Marcel, thank you for the presentation. Uh, a a few points. In the draft scenario assumptions, it's very difficult for the public to understand um clearly what was meant there as the board was referring to. And it would be helpful uh in small print to explain that KPS is uh Castagna and PVP is the Potter Valley project. M- most looking at this will not know what that is. Um I'm glad to see that you have a scenario number five there um for abrupt disruptions. And that could almost be relabeled disaster planning because it's, as you were saying, it's almost a guarantee. I don't see how we do not have a fire here in the next twenty to fifty years and or multiple fires, actually. Um, the one, we're not gonna have one wildland fire. We'll have a series of wildland fires because not everything is gonna burn at one time. Um, with Lake Sonoma and all this, it might be helpful to start to refer to it as as water source number eight of our seven reservoirs. And that's in essence, our extended reservoir. If you're trying to get it out to the public somehow, maybe that's one way to present. It's just just a sugge- suggestion there. Um, Marcel, in your, in your uh model, you had ocean D cell. But I would say that that should have a big asterisk next to it, particularly with what just happened in in um Orange County where uh the the um coastal commission said no. And I think it, I think putting a plant, not against D cell, but I think putting a plant on the ocean here on the north coast is I'm just never gonna happen. I think it would be just years and years of fighting. So just putting that with there be my suggestion. Um, your low prob- probability um where you had on that uh the with all the lines that Larry uh Bryden was just referring to, um suggests that there's a one to five percent chance of falling below our thirty thousand, twenty five to thirty thousand level that we wanna stay above, which could suggest worst case every twenty years, we'll have a severe drought. Looking at that, that's what I'm getting out of that. I'm not sure if that's correct, but that's how I picked it up. And um I think those are my comments. Thank you so much for uh a a bit of a difficult but but informative presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Roger Roberts, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Uh, interesting presentation. Uh, there's much more uh coming and looking forward to that. Uh, but I do have a couple of observations that I'd like to share with you. Uh, in the five scenarios that you start with, there's nothing in the description of those scenarios as to the associated levels of risk. as to the associated levels of risk for those scenarios. And that's very important for people to understand as terms of the background of, of what drives the scenario. So I think you need to explain what the level of risk is for each of those scenarios that you are putting and assuming in the model on the front end. Then on sources of supply, in terms of SCWA, they have triggers in their own contracts with us in terms of how much water they can supply to Marin Municipal Water District. And I assume that you know what those contract triggers are with SCWA and how they will impact the various scenarios going forward. If not, then you must do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ed Jameson, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to briefly comment on two items. Speaking to the Sonoma water supply, when we need water, they're in a drought as well. And they, they still are this year. Last October, we were told that our Sonoma water would be reduced from seventy-five hundred acre feet in twenty twenty-one to only thirty-five hundred acre feet next year. Our drought is going to be Sonomas as well, so that water cannot be assumed to be a reliable source in our droughts. On the other issue, I'd like to comment on, on the somewhat confusing chart, I would agree that of the hundred and seven simulations, only one dropped below thirty thousand acre feet. I'm concerned that we came too close to that last year with only a two-year drought. It was only the October record rainfall that saved us. So I'm concerned that your modeling is somehow unrealistically showing too high minimum storage level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colette, are you able to speak now, sir?
Yes, you do.
Yeah. Okay. The next two speakers, Paul Mann and then Rick Adler. Mr. Mann, please.
Hey guys, Paul Mann at Water Champions. First off, Armin and Marcelo, really interesting analysis of supply and possible scenarios for how to increase that water supply is needed. However, I do have two concerns in that first, relying on historical information could be very risky. We're, we're now in unprecedented times of climate change. We're in a mega drought, which we haven't experienced in twelve hundred years. Second, it may be risky putting too much dependability on increasing supply. It's a good idea if water is plentiful, but it could be very dangerous if our neighbors up north experience decreasing supply. If the fires impact the supply, or if they have to make or observe deeper imposed setbacks. It could also lead the customers paying more on their water bill and have to employ more extreme conservation. That could impact their lifestyle and landscapes. I love the math. I love the models, yet they're only that. I think we need to be realistic and these are only best guesses that, that, and that we really cannot accurately predict the future based on the past. I really think we need to be employing solutions today as if we don't have water tomorrow so that we can get ahead of the game and not risk finding ourselves in a don't look up scenario with no water supply and not enough time to bring sustainable solutions through out. So with that, I'd love to see you include in your model decentralized water capture, reuse and conservation solutions employed at the residential household and commercial business level. These solutions are actually reducing potable water usage by fifty percent or more. We have real unpredictable data and we're happy to share that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rick Adler, please.
Yes, thank you. I see one basic model is that the, we're in a long-term drought. It's just going to get worse and worse, climate change. We're not going to be able to stop climate change because we can't stop the petroleum industries, our major regressive party. So we're just going to get hotter and hotter, drier and drier. And so we should immediately begin setting up every basic model of every basic opportunity to get more water, starting with reclaiming the wastewater. Maybe we can get ten, twenty percent out of that. D cell of the river up north, maybe, uh, maybe we can get another ten or twenty percent. We should spend several hundred thousand dollars exploring fog. That's something we'll have no matter how the drought proceeds because there will be the microclimate between the shore and the water. We'll always have this fog. Maybe we can get five percent out of that. We should also plan on eventually having, every house will have a water, electronic water meter and two, like two water systems in every house, one for the wastewater, gray water, black water, another for the drinking water. And we would be kept separate so that we can apply wastewater for irrigation. And I'm going to run out of time here, but I think we should immediately begin planning to do all those things, every possible way to get more water because we're going to need it. And I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adler. I'm going to try one more time. Mr. Colette, can you hear me, sir? If you want, since I can't hear you, if you'd like to leave a comment, a board comment at MarinWater.org or you, that would be great. And we'll definitely pass it on to our board of directors and to staff. Thank you. There are no further comments.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board comments? Okay. Well, thanks you all to the presenters and for all our work and we're done.
No.
Yeah, one, go ahead.
Go ahead.
You, you Molly, go ahead.
I think we, we need to loop back and capture item number two, which somehow we, we just flipped right past always got us going quickly. So if we can do that, Crystal, were you going to present or was that?
Directors, we're trying to get Alex back in the room as well. So this is item number two on the agenda. This is the symbol item for award of contract for the Pine Mountain Tunnel Phase One work. Let me see. Did we get Alex back in there?
I have two. Is he under also your name?
No, she said he was waiting for you to move him back.
I don't see him.
Okay.
There is. Yeah. Your name.
Break you out for a minute. Oh no, what's going on?
All right. So Alex, yeah, go ahead, take it away on this.
Okay, I'll keep this short. So yeah, I'm Alex and I Engineering Manager Design Section. So this evening I'm, I'm presenting the award of the contract nineteen sixty-five for the first phase of the Pine Mountain Tunnel Tanks Replacement Projects. On May tenth, the district received an open eight bids for the project. Staff presented the item at May seventeenth board and for award and denied was referred for the discussion at future board meeting. Majoran Gelati submitted the lowest responsive and responsible bid in the amount of five million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. And staff has recommended that the board approve a resolution awarding contract nineteen sixty-five to Majoran Gelati in the amount of five million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-two dollars and authorize the general manager to execute any necessary amendments to the contract, which do not exceed one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you, Alex. Any board comment? Hearing none? Any public comment?
There are none.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
I'm sorry, I, I missed the first and the second. I couldn't hear those.
Bragman, Bragman. Or did I, I'm not sure who.
I did the second.
Second.
Okay. Okay, Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Gibson.
Hi.
Director Kohler.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
And President Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, now we're done. Thank you all.
Okay.